I would like to call the City Council Committee the whole meeting for February 7th, 2018, to order. At this time, for our moment of silence, I'd like us to concentrate on the fact that we are affected by so many people being challenged with the flu problems, so many people that are sick. I wouldn't ask for a show of hands necessarily, but I would think many of you have family members. The schools are challenged, a number of our city staff. So, in a moment, let's think about that, wishing them all an opportunity, looking forward to getting back to health, but more importantly, those of us who can provide resources to those who may need assistance during this time. With that, a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman Tompkins, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Rossen?
Here.
I'm sorry, Dickman?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
Grip? McGinnis?
Here.
Cool?
Here.
Tompkins?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Nine present, your honor.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to wish you a good evening, and as we begin this meeting of the City Council, I would again like to welcome all those in attendance and those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance, and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handhelds devices, as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chamber. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on a committee agenda, you're encouraged to do so during that standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the City Council under the Public with Business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. You are asked to limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste, which I know you all will. With that, we want to move on, and first of all, is there a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Thank you very much. We have two public hearings this evening. First, and Alderman Ambrose, under Public Works, will lead that public hearing.
Thank you, honor. I open a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated costs for the West Fifth Street and Western Avenue intersection improvement project. Estimated cost is $562,000. Before we get into that, I'd like to have our chief engineer come up and let us all see what we're talking about here.
Brian Shad, Public Works. Basically, this is a reconstruction of the Fifth and Western intersection and the associated pavement east of the intersection. This is mainly due to needed drainage improvements, ADA improvements needed at the intersection, as well as, you can see the existing conditions here, there's a number of utility patches. The existing base has failed, it's well-rutted, and it's quite a rough ride and in need of quite of attention. So, we have been at this once, prices came back fairly high, it is a lot of handwork in historic brick. So, we took it back to the drawing board, revised our design, and we actually went back with four different options. First option would be, actually, two different ways here. Addressing the drainage complaints or drainage issues would be additional five intakes in the area, upgraded pipe, fix the issues we have there, as well as improve that ADA transition through the zone. Tying back into, we actually need to go nearly all the way back east to Scott Street to continue that drainage and make sure we don't have any water pockets. The first bid actually did half of the street through the area, tying back into the existing brick that we recognize may be a little bit more difficult for the contractors, so we went back with the full remove and replace design. That would allow a little bit easier work on the crews. As we work with these historic bricks, which we would salvage from the area and put back in place, they are, we'll call them tumbled through the years, so putting them back together is quite a bit of a hand labor issue. As we looked at other options, other possible options, the Western Avenue, as well as the intersection of Fifth and Western, is a protected brick area, so leaving that area in brick, standing by that code, we looked at the possibility for concrete pavement through. There is a large amount of truck traffic, anything that gets by on the Harrison Business 61 corridor, there are people that do business down, through the downtown area, they need to bring those trucks through to avoid the trucking and bridge. The other option we looked at was asphalt. Both of these would be a pavement thickness that would deal with that freight traffic, as well as, in this particular instance, being asphalt, our own city crews, who are very adept at working with that medium, would be able to go back in for future maintenance.
Thanks, Brian. Why don't you leave the brick concept up? All right. Anybody from the Public Works should address this, please come forward and state your This is a public hearing.
Members of the City Council, my name is Tom Hart. I know many of you personally here. Spent a dozen years in this chamber, and the old one upstairs, and down the street at the courthouse, and a half a dozen years on the DOT, and five years working for the State Department of Economic Development. So, 35 years in public service, elected and appointed of office. I appreciate very much what you do. I'm here because a couple of my friends asked me to be here, Tonya and Odilia, Indiana, who own properties just off to the left here. They own the Corner House and Cafe de Marie to the left. They're church friends, they're passionate about historic preservation, they're passionate about this street remaining brick. And to understand them, they're actually, I think, a remarkable Davenport success story. They came here, the two sisters, 15 years ago, to go to Palmer, and they stayed. They bought at a time at a place that people told them not to buy. They put two businesses there, a chiropractic office and a very successful cafe. They're entrepreneurs, they're what we want in this city. They're friends of mine, and I really admire what they've done. They have a very simple vision. They want, they love the Brick Street, they want the Brick Street. It's not complicated beyond that. Your RFP calls for Brick Street, we're happy about that, we want that issue put out, but it also calls for alternatives using concrete and asphalt. They don't want concrete, they don't want asphalt, the neighborhood doesn't want asphalt, the neighborhood doesn't want concrete, they want the street repaired like it should be. The problem with the street now is not that the street is failing because of poor construction, it's failing because the city, now, none of you are responsible for this, probably dates back to my time here in the chamber, but the city has inappropriately repaired the street, storm sewer, sanitary sewer. The rest of the street writing surface is fine, but they want it repaired like it should be repaired, brick, like it was built 120 years ago. Their businesses down there, and to understand the Rogers' passion, it's very helpful to know where they came from. They moved here from Omaha. They both moved in the old, lived in the old, worked in the old market area of Omaha. There's an article that I gave to the mayor, actually, last week, 30 best cities in America, Omaha's 28. In the paragraph about Omaha, it talks about the old market. It's a five-sentence tribute to Omaha, and they say, they talk about the old market area and its cobblestone streets. They're actually not cobblestone, they're brick. But to understand why these two women feel so strongly about it, it's because they've seen what can happen to an area that has been stressed and can come back. We would ask this evening, as you consider putting out this RFP, to delete the alternatives that address allow asphalt and allow concrete. They want it repaired correctly, and the way to do that is with brick. Thank you very much, and thank you for what you do here.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks for your service and, you know, your 30 best cities, I'm sure the top one was America's greatest city, Davenport.
Not yet, you're getting there.
Anybody else? Bill Ashton, live at 2831 East Pleasant Street, Davenport. If you drive the brick streets in Davenport, the problem is that you'll find all the dips and repairs are due to where they had utilities, storm sewers, you know, sanitary sewers. Wherever there's a repair, you almost always find a dip, and that's especially true here along Fifth Street. You've got to separate the cost. Once you fix those utilities correctly, the Brick Street will last forever. And that's, actually, it's pretty true of most of the streets in Davenport, even in the asphalt and concrete. You'll find the dips are usually due to the fact they didn't put good compaction back before they put the street back. So, in this case, if you fix the utilities and just put the bricks back, it'll last indefinitely. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you for listening to me today. I want to start off with, like Tom was saying, I have vested in this area and invested, yeah, sorry, Deanna Walter, I'm sorry. And, as he said, I own Cafe de Marie. And I vested and invested in this area, and I believe I've done a really great thing still to this day, no matter what happens here tonight. I love the town and I love the people. It's beautiful. I saw a vision and I came here, and like he said, I saw old there and I loved it, and I fell in love with this street. And everybody said, "What are you doing? That's, you know, lots of negativity, that's never going to go anywhere." Everybody moved out of downtown and they're not coming back. And I just think that that's what I heard, and that's, I didn't believe it, and I kept moving on, and I think people are seeing that love, and people are moving into the area from all over the world and investing in the same thing that I fell in love with. I run the cafe every day and I get people from all over the world, I'm so excited. They visit Davenport and they say the most beautiful thing is the beauty of the street, the beauty of this building. It's different. It's not a stainless steel building that you would find a normal restaurant in. And I said they're amazed at what we can bring in, you know, the signs falling off, we're working on all that stuff, but we're trying to catch up with their own tail. But people have really embraced it, and the number one thing that they say that they love is just that historic nature of it. It's not something you expect. So, I'm just begging you that you would please consider, again, deleting the alternative of asphalt and concrete and repairing and replacing the brick. I did want to say I spoke to Bill Olson today, and I can give you his information later, like his contact information if you need it. He's the business agent for the Bricklayers Local Six here. Without a doubt, he said I could quote him, without a doubt, we definitely have the skill set, trade, to perform this and finish this project in its entirety, and he would love the opportunity to do so. We were recognized, I can also give you this later, it's a website, that we were rated as, I think, one of three places, it's something about a website, Committees for Brick Streets Restoration, and we were listed as the Quad Cities, Davenport is one of those places. So, as Tom told me, we actually sent people to learn this trade, and I think it'd be neat to use that power and restore something that's beauty. I believe in old, and I believe I have an old soul, and I think this is part of that, so I'd just like to make that alive again. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
My name's Terry Gens, I live in the Gold Coast, and I am currently the president of the Gold Coast-Homburg Historic District. And when this issue came up last fall, the board had drafted a letter in support of protecting as much of the streets as possible, and it's not very long, I'll read it real quick. Part of this actually is the intersection, and it sounds like the intersection is already going to be saved, so that part of this is already addressed in here, because at that time last fall, everything was up in the air and kind of sounded like we were going to possibly just lose the whole thing. Anyway, "Dear sirs and madams, the Board of Directors of the Gold Coast-Homburg Historic District Association is writing to communicate its support for Davenport's Brick Street program, and especially for retaining brick pavement at the intersection of Fifth Street and Western Avenue. The City of Davenport has wisely established a Brick Streets program in which designated Brick Streets are properly maintained and protected from removal. The value of Brick Streets not only exists in their obvious aesthetic properties, as they, without debate, create a streetscape of beauty and charm that connects with the city's rich history, but also the value of Brick Streets rests in their low life cycle costs. Many Brick Streets are over 100 years old and have required little in the way of maintenance over that time. While the initial cost of blacktop or concrete may be lower, the life cycle cost is actually much higher, given that the expected life is considerably less than brick. We urge City of Davenport staff and elected officials to follow the established Brick Streets program, do not remove the intersection of Fifth and Western from its protected status. Repairs or rebuilding plans should call for retaining brick pavement in the present herringbone pattern. Good planning and stewardship of public funds requires the consideration of cost in the long run, not just the current year's budget. Sincerely, Terry Gens." And that kind of leads me on to, we have a copy of the listed Brick Streets, I don't exactly know how old this is, but it, right down here, Western, intersection at Fifth, and talking about the stewardship, in Section 3.1.04, it talks about removal of existing pavement and subgrade. I think it was maybe a year and a half ago, possibly two years, when there was some ongoing issues with drainage at that intersection, and it had been torn up and relayed and then torn up again, and half the brick disappeared. So, nobody was protecting it, it was stacked over on the boulevard by telephone pole, and little by little, the brick was just disappearing, somebody was coming by and stealing it. But 3.1.04 specifically says, "Brick paver shall be carefully removed, salvaged, and stored for the patch restoration. Bricks broken by the contractor due to carelessness or are lost due to theft will be replaced at the contractor's expense." That was not done. It was concreted back over, since the bricks disappeared, brick was not relayed, it was put back in concrete. And from the one photo that you saw up here, the intersection is just an absolute mess. And it's not rutted from semi-traffic, especially east, the area, the long area from Western over to Scott, the semis are not damaging that, that's not damaged by semis. It's a drainage issue, the whole thing is a drainage issue. And then, aside from that, as a citizen of Davenport, I cannot believe that this little section is going to cost over half a million, or half, or nearly half a million dollars, that just blows my mind. I don't understand how in the world that would cost that kind of money. So, once again, this is a drainage issue, and I honestly think somebody somewhere is trying to make this a brick issue, and it's, that is such a small part of the drainage problem, you're going to have to tear it up anyway. And from that other photo, that entire stretch over to Scott Street, you could see that there was just a few little patches of concrete, so why, so I don't understand also, why would you want to cover that beauty up, or trying to add beauty, not take it away? Thank you.
All right, thanks. Anybody else?
May I give some pictures to someone that you can pass?
Sure.
Just traverse through, just views of the brick?
Yeah, we'll pass, they'll know how to figure it out. Thanks. Take a look at the pictures.
Hi. My name is Dr. Tonya Rogers. I've pretty much already been introduced. My sister and I are the ones who moved here to go to Palmer. And speaking about perfection, I work with the upper cervical spine, and specifically, and that's the only area that I correct. The neurology and the cerebral spinal fluid and what I see on MRIs and phonar scans and watching that work, the specificity and the due diligence that I do in my office is what I expect to be done here, without excuses. So, that's where I'm coming from, if you can understand. On that tablet, there are some, several views, some of which showing the pristine of brick between Western and Scott, having actually no divots on three-quarters of the street, only failing as city, as engineer Bill Ashton had mentioned, and Terry, and Tom, and Deanna, that it's only areas where the drainage issue is a problem. So, to, the brick is in great shape where it has lasted, where it has not been replaced with asphalt, and where it is not given in to the valleys of the area where the drainage system is failing. So, I am assuming that we will be addressing the subbase in the correct manner for which it needs to be done, and know that we will do the best that we can. To say that if the subbase is done correctly, as previous conversations, I don't want it to be an if, we're going to do the best we can, we have great workers here, we have great staff, we have great engineers, we're sure it could be.
You're correct.
Okay, thank you. Speaking, if there's a truck issue, and that's why the reason why they may be wanting to put asphalt or brick, I spoke, as I said previously, with the dispatcher of Dorn, which is the predominant truck local, he stated to me clearly that if he was restricted as a weight load or is restricted from commercial use on that property, he could easily go other ways to get to the areas. That was one of the two that I spoke with. The aesthetic view of the area that we moved into is due to its historic nature. The initial view was because of the central part, which now is on the Historic Register. The city did try to get that removed, but the Historic Preservation Committee denied it, so that was good. Now that we're working on a street that is east, because I hear that it is easier to do so, is not a good enough excuse for those residents who live in this area, who, we come very young, the people before us, Mary McGinnis, Terry, Jeff, Dwayne, all of these people, Tom Hart, the people, and you perhaps, have laid the foundation, we are coming in at the end, I clearly understand that, there's been a lot of historic homes that are already preserved. We are trying to establish this as a gateway to our community in the Gold Coast, flowing into the beautiful downtown that has been created, and also the riverfront. We don't want that beauty that you've created already and are starting to, to stop here. We want it to be preserved, the Brick Streets all over the city are actually being lost to being covered with asphalt. The fact that they are now creating ways in which to melt the asphalt to get to the original brick shows us that people actually do appreciate the brick. Excuse me for my, the sanitary storm sewer, as Bill Ashton had mentioned, is the issue, not the brick alternatives. The 562,000 that has come from the last bid, which is 442,000, I assume that the first bid should have been done correctly and with complete knowledge at the time. I spoke to those members who bid, and they agree with their bids at that time. The change and the revision should have been first put out, the original bid. I think at this time, I just would like you to void the other options other than brick, to not include asphalt, to not include concrete, because the reasons do not seem valid. We do have the work, the workers to do this, we do have the skill set, we have people who've already actually stepped up and forward and actually asked to be allowed to do this. The beauty that we have in Davenport, the reason why we stayed is, as Tom Hart said, is because we see something great here. I'm already seeing it with downtown and the riverfront, it's very exciting to be at the cusp of this, and we're in the area just right at that point. So, the brick has something to offer. My patients talk about it, my sister's cafe, they're her patrons, hundreds of people traverse in her cafe every day, and they appreciate the historic nature. You don't go out to 53rd when you bring people into town and talk about Davenport and what makes it great. You bring it into the downtown, the Gold Coast Historic, the riverfront, we have an amazing asset here that I do not want to let go, that none of us want to let go of. It's over 100 years old, how can you pave over something that's over 100 years old and actually is in amazing, amazing shape if it was actually originally replaced in the original way that it should have been when it actually failed with the storm sewers? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? You know, we appreciate people's commitment to this great neighborhood and our great city. So, I ask for motion to close this public hearing. Second, all in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Number two is a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Utica Ridge Sidewalk Phase Two, estimated cost $102,000. Anybody from Public? Hearing didn't see no one, I move to close this public hearing. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you, honor. Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Just as a clarification for everybody, as I know we have some students here tonight, which we'll, I'll mention in a moment, this is our Committee the whole, that was a public hearing, we did not vote on anything yet, we voted on the fact of letting people have hearing from the public. This item will show up again in the agenda, these items come up in our agenda, and we'll discuss them at that time in more detail potentially, or clarification if it's needed. So, to let you know the little bit of the process, again, just a clarification for the whole group, Committee the whole is where we read through all of these items that's on the agenda, gives an opportunity for the public to speak, for the council to speak, give feedback and ask questions, and then, based on the items that we feel have been vetted properly, they move on for approval next week at the actual City Council meeting. Any ones that we still feel we have questions on, we put on a discussion agenda, and those will be discussed again next week. So, just give you a little bit of the flow of how this meeting works, just to give you a sense of the process here a little bit. Our next item, just so we norm, we do not have any presentations this evening for tonight's meeting, but we do have an opportunity for our council members to have any petitions or communications. I'm going to start with Alderman Dickman as our Community Engagement Chair.
Thank you, your honor. This Saturday, the 10th, it's finally here, the Skilled Trades Day is going to be at, beyond the baseline from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. There will be about a dozen different activities that represent a variety of careers for young people, or the young at heart to try out and see if that would be a career that would interest them. So, I hope that we'll have a good crowd, and those who complete, the participants who complete the activities will get some free passes at the Putnam. And speaking of the Putnam, they will be at my ward meeting tomorrow at Truman Elementary, and so if you haven't been to the Putnam in a while, you should definitely come to the ward meeting and then go check out the Putnam, because there's a lot of cool stuff going on. and then go check out the Putnam, because there's a lot of cool stuff going on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderman Dickman. Alderman McGinnis?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to remind everybody, I don't know how well the weather's gonna cooperate, but there is a third ward meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 at the community room of the Davenport Police Department. I don't want people to go out if the weather's bad and there's lots of snow, but I'm gonna be there. So I will make it there, and I hope that you can join me for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in council with a comment? I would just, I just wanted to share one thing. I want to thank many of you and my Alderman colleagues, but also the staff. We did a presentation of our state of the city on Monday. I think we do have a lot to celebrate, and we're able to do that. So I want to thank all the staff in particular, our city administrator, my assistant Nevada Lemke, but many of the staff who helped put that presentation together. So thank you for all of that as we move forward. And just want to note, Alderman Grip is in Des Moines, working with our team on legislative initiatives. And obviously, we have to work with our elected officials, not only in this, in our city, but also in the region, and particularly in the state, as we have to work together to bring the resources here. So he is representing us here with some of the city staff as well. So thank you for all of that. We're gonna now move on to our discussion agenda. And our first area to be discussed is community development. In the absence of Alderman Grip, Alderman Kula will lead that discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one item tonight on the community development agenda, and that is a resolution accepting a short sale of 601 Farnham Street owned by Interfaith Housing LTD. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this issue? Anyone on the council? Seeing and hearing no one, I move that the resolution be moved forward to the consent agenda.
So moved.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and that concludes the business of the community development.
Thank you, Alderman Kula. Again, one other clarification. All the items you see on this list, we've all talked about and discussed and been made aware of before. So we're not seeing this the first time ourselves. I think that's important to understand. We've already gone through the whole agenda individually and in groups on our Tuesday sessions, right before this, yesterday afternoon, which are open to the public as well, 3:30 on the first and third Tuesdays in the month. So please feel, feel free to join us in future sessions. Our second area to be discussed is public safety, and Alderman Rossen is the chair. Will lead that discussion, and Alderman Condon will set the agenda.
Thank you. We have several items on the agenda. First section, number one, resolutions closing various streets, lanes, or public grounds on the listed dates to hold outdoor events, the first item. Shenanigans, St. Patrick's Day event, 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Closure location at 7:00 a.m. until parade ends, ends the sidewalk in front of 303 West Third Street. After parade ends, the closure of the parking lane and one travel lane until midnight in Third Ward. And I do believe that's a typo on the 12:00 p.m. Tom? To be, to be a.m. So it's 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., or else that'd be a really short party time. So anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Alderman Mattson?
Just a comment to make sure they know that the 12:00 a.m., so they gotta pick it up right away. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from council would like to comment on this item? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. The next item, Gathering of the Green Association Antique John Deere Collectors Event at the River Center, March 18th to the 25th, 2018, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Closure location, Pershing Street between Second and Third Streets, also in Third Ward. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Project Renewal Fit Fest, and this is a fun event. I've attended it. April 21st, 2018, 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Closure location, West Sixth Street between Marquette and Gaines Street and Warren Street, closed between Fifth and Sixth Street, also in Third Ward. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. River Bandits, River Bandits 5K Race, April 21st, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Closure location begins on Second Street to the Centennial Bridge, over the Centennial Bridge to the Government Bridge, and return to Modern Woodman Park via the bike path. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. St. Paul the Apostle Catholic Church, join the Journey Fun Run, April 21st, 2018, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Closure location begins on Arlington and Grand Avenue, south half a block to High Street, west half a block to Tyler Park, and return. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Village Preservation Society, Village in Bloom, Saturday, May 5th, 2018, 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. Closure location, 11th Street between Mound and Jersey Ridge Road. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Corn Belt Running Club, Bix at 6, Training Runs, Thursdays, June 21st through the 28th, July 5th and July 12th, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Closure location, Third Street from McClair to Pershing. Pershing from Third to Kirkwood Boulevard, Kirkwood Boulevard from Pershing to Jersey Ridge, Jersey Ridge from Kirkwood Boulevard to Middle Road, Middle Road to McClellan Boulevard, to River Drive, and return. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. The second section is motion approving noise variance requests for various events on the listed dates and times. We have one item listed, which is the Mississippi Valley Fair, 2815 West Locust Street, various dates and times in 2018. They submitted quite a comprehensive list, April through September, over 50 DBA. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? And we have a couple from council, Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you very much. I would like to take a look at the dates and compare, I am getting from residents concerns about noise, and I would like, just like the opportunity to look at sort of history of the number of events that are going on, and especially the ones that are going on past 10:00 p.m. And haven't had the chance to do that yet. So if we could do that, have a, have a chance to do that, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Okay. So the, the primary for you is that the noise lasting past 10:00 p.m.?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And the number of events, if it's grown, or is the same, or, just need to look at
Alderwoman Dickman?
And concern about noise from events was also what I was going to bring up. I've gotten a couple calls from residents, and my ward ends fairly far away from it. So working with the Mississippi Valley Fairgrounds about when they're starting their races as well, because I do know that sound carries very far, and trying to get them to be very prompt with their events so that they can end at a more decent hour for those of us who have early bedtimes, or little ones with little bedtimes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dickman. Is there someone from staff? In the, the back pages of the packet, it does say here that for the variance, that the last race would start prior to 10:00 p.m. Does anyone from staff can comment? Jackie?
I can try to help you.
Ah, yes, I'm sorry, Jackie. You did time in, and I'm not looking at the keypad.
That's okay.
Go for it.
In the past, what has always happened, I think when there's been complaints later at night, is their races are, the race is delayed, and then their feature race, which is like their most important race, I guess, of the evening.
The last one.
From what I know about it, yeah. That's why they ask for the variance, if it goes, if it starts before p.m. that they can, or 10:00 p.m., excuse me, that they can go ahead and finish it. That's about all the information that I have about it.
Okay.
So.
So that's more than likely some of the reason the noise is, is going over.
Yeah.
Thank you. Alderman Mattson?
Yeah, I just want to add to that. In our many years of discussion with this, that's always an ask. The concern comes usually, is it'll start like at 5:00 to 10:00, and then go way over. So Alderwoman Dickman's point right on, to be prompt at the beginning is, is, is always a, they try and do that. But, but when you jam it in right before, that's, those are the ones that cause concern, and there is a lot of complaints when that happens. Not a lot, but probably a couple times a year. So if there's something, it could be worked to make it maybe you gotta start before 9:30 or something. That, or there's something, you know.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Ambrose?
Thanks. Yeah, I mentioned a few issues yesterday at our meeting, but you know, the fairgrounds has been racing out on Friday nights for over 70 years. And, you know, it has a huge economic impact, not only to our community, but to Northwest Davenport. And I really think they make a very conservative effort to push forward, but sometimes they're dealing with rain events. And, you know, it's unfortunate, but, you know, a couple times a year at the most, you know, we shouldn't start becoming heavy-handed to a great event that has been going on for over 70 years. That's my request.
Thank you. Alderwoman Tompkins?
Thank you. I was gonna basically say the same thing, and that, excuse me, it's my understanding, it's due to the, to the weather. So usually when it rains, they will hold it over for a little while. It would be interesting to see if we do have data, to see how many times a year it does start later, understandably. But if it is minimal, I think that's something that maybe we can work with them on. So, thank you.
And do I have Alderwoman McGinnis? One second time, go ahead.
Thank you very much, and I won't do it again. Yeah, and I agree. I, I, part of what I'm asking is if we could look at data and see if it's a frequent occurrence, if it's, if it's, if it's occurring more, if the, those kind of things would be extremely helpful. And then, and then we can talk to, you know, residents who have concerns. If they have some sense of it's staying the same, then I, and, and not increasing, I think that's the concern that they have. And these are, people talking to me are long-term residents here. So it's, that's, that's what I'm asking, is a chance to look at that.
All right. Given commentary, I think it's reasonable that we go ahead and put this on discussion. And if we can get a commitment from staff to, we can organize a meeting, perhaps with the chief and someone from staff, and a couple of the older people, that would be great, and come back next week with some feedback on that. Okay, moving on. Item number three, if there's no other comments on that, I'm sorry, Ray, did you want another comment? Go ahead.
Thanks for the opportunity. You know, Friday nights are their usual races. But maybe once or twice a season, they'll have one of their big events, which is usually a national race. And they're on Wednesday nights, and at times, they get to be a little challenging, because there's so much money invested in putting this together. And, you know, it's a national race. And Wednesday nights, you know, 12,000 people at a race, so it gets a little challenging. So like I say, you know, we, I've been representing that area for a long time. Usually, once, maybe twice a year, the race might run over. But they work really hard to keep everything in check, and, you know, and I appreciate their efforts.
Thank you. No other comments on this item? We'll move on. Section three, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. There's just one listed for Third Ward, at the Stardust, at the Stardust LLC, 218 Iowa Street, license type C. Anyone from public would like to comment on this item? I think they're leaving. Okay. Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, that'll move on. The next section is annual license renewals. I won't read through those, or they're in your packet, the entire next page. So we're moving that along. But I would ask Alderman Condon to go ahead and set the agenda.
Yes, but that one goes in discussion.
So I move to put, under item two, motion approving those variances, we'll put the Mississippi Valley Fair on discussion, and then I'll move to put all other items on the consent agenda.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. All right, we're done. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. I just want to note, before we move on to our next discussion area, I wanted to recognize, which I failed to do on the earlier section, the students from Eastern Iowa Community College District that are here this evening. Their teacher, Christine Powers, brought them in. They are leadership students as part of their IT program. And we want to thank you all for being here this evening. They were here for a tour, learning more about the city. And we're delighted to see you committing to that important work, but also making a good commitment to your education in the future. So thank you very much for being here. Enjoyed having you. Our third area to be discussed tonight is Public Works. Alderman Ambrose will lead that discussion, and Alderman Dunn as vice chair will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open up with the first item of discussion is a resolution to approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the West, West Fifth Street and Western Avenue Intersection Improvement Project. Estimated cost is $562,000. Anybody from the public? Alder Lady McGinnis?
Is there an opportunity for?
Your Honor, Mr. Chair, we would like the RFP issued. It's been too long delayed. We would like those alternatives deleted pertaining to asphalt and concrete. We ask respectfully that you consider a motion to delete those. Thank you.
Anybody else? Alder Lady McGinnis?
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Yes, I want to thank everybody that's come out tonight. And I, I am going to make a motion to amend this, but I would like to give others a chance to speak if they wish. So I'd ask you to come back to me, Alderman Ambrose, when I'm done making my comments. I would appreciate that. This is, has been an ongoing issue in this neighborhood, and I want to recognize people in the neighborhood, Tonia, Deanna particularly, who have been literally stewards of this intersection. I was involved, became involved with this about four years ago, I think it was, that we all went out, Tonia and her mother and I, and, and one other person went out to a meeting at Public Works to discuss this. Others have watched the intersection, has, have watched the damage to it. And, and Tonia, I want to recognize her, because she has also worked, and as a citizen, has called trucking companies to say, is there a way we can, you know, get the trucks off the street, to try to help the street. And she's done that as a resident. And that's really remarkable. And she's developed, you know, a relationship with these people. And it's very important. I know that, because that doesn't happen a lot. You know, we don't, we don't invite citizen engagement, we don't always have it. And I want to recognize that it's extremely important. And what Deanna's done with her cafe, and the, the feeling that her, her visitors have for the area, and, and what she's created there is remarkable. You know, this is a, still a very challenged part of Davenport, and we have many people of all kinds who live in our neighborhood. We have people who are of limited means, of, of more means. We have all kinds of families. And it's still an area, though, that people will go, are, are you, do you feel safe living there? And so for them to carve this out, to carve these businesses out, is really incredible. And I want to, I want to recognize their commitment to this street, because it's very important. I also, you know, this has been going on for a long time. This street has continued to deteriorate. There, I know that the county is very interested in having something done here. Their, their employees cross this intersection. So it, it's been going on for a very, very long time. It's been going on too long. I am, you know, was part of the council, just came on the council as this proposal, I guess had gone forth to finally get repairs to it. There were three different bids that ranged at that point from $442,000 to $527,000. And it's because, you know, again, of a drainage issue. This is a, you know, this is an issue with, not the street, it's an issue with what's underneath it. But the, some of the issues that surround this area, and, and the desire to perhaps not bring, leave this, and, and the materials that have lasted for over 100 years, and they have, this has been here for 120 years, is because of the lack of care in repairing. As there has been damage, as there, as there has been problems with the drainage underneath, the pulling up of the brick and the plugging it with concrete has made it less attractive and easier to just say, well, let's just don't bother with this anymore. let's just don't bother with this anymore. And I don't think we can afford to do that. Uh, we're talking about, um, um, in, in this city council about urban revitalization, we're talking about looking at our, um, this area, and not just this part of the neigh, of, of the city, but our whole old historic and heritage part of our, our city. Um, and we have to find a better way. We have to have better planning, we have to better, have a better approach, and we have to have, um, we have to, we have to have a focus on what we're doing, and we have to have a plan. So, um, I would ask, um, for the council to, um, support on this. And again, if you could come back to me if they're in, I can't see if there's anybody else that wants to talk, but I'd, I'll be quiet for now.
All right. Alderman Dunn?
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. I don't want to put anybody on the spot here, but the $562,000, what fund is, is that going to be paid out of sewer funds, or, do we have a breakdown on that?
Clay Merritt, Public Works. It'd be out of general obligation bonds. So there, there's no sewer or clean water money, uh, in the project.
Alderman Mattson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, uh, two points. One perspective, a little bit different. So I, I kind of run the Veterans Day Parade every year. And, um, two comments that I always get from young kids are, well, look at those neat houses up there. And then, look at that street. That's kind of neat, but we need to do something with it, because it's kind of folded, but they like it. And, and then the other point, since it's a sewer project, why shouldn't it be out of the sewer fund? Thank you.
Well, we'll discuss that at our budget meeting. Alderman Rossen?
Thank you. Um, I think, Corey, did you want to do a point of clarification?
So the improvements are sanitary, or storm sewer, which is a separate fund from the sanitary fund. So what we traditionally refer to as sewer money isn't applicable for this project.
Um, thank you. And I just wanted to chime in with Marion. Marion pretty much covered all the points, but I just, just want to say, in Fifth Ward, Fifth Ward has a lot of brick streets, and I'm very much a proponent of keeping our brick streets, because brick streets brings a certain level of, of elegance when you drive down a brick street. Um, and as we move forward in looking at revitalizing our neighborhoods, uh, we want to look at having neighborhoods, not only our neighborhoods involved in that revitalization, uh, planning process, uh, but keeping those things that make Davenport unique. And this is one of those things that we have quite a few miles of that's really unique in Davenport. And if you haven't had a chance to drive around, at least in Fifth Ward, I have some blocks that every street is brick. And it literally just takes you back in time with, with the mansions that line these streets. Um, it looks really neat, and that's something very unique for our, for our community that we want to preserve. So it, it, in my, I, I've actually eaten a lot at Cafe de Marie, so well done, with location, the beautiful building, everything. And, you know, when I have guests that come in from out of town, you know, I'll be honest, I don't take them touring Target on Elmore. I take them downtown. I show them the river, I take them to the Lock and Dam, and then I will probably take them to Cafe de Marie, because the whole experience of driving that little one-lane hobbley brick street, and trying to find a parking spot, and then having a great meal, it's all creates that kind of ambiance of this sort of special visit to Davenport. You know, and, and in that vein, and considering where the location of the whole stretch of street is, even though the intersection is the only protected piece, I would support, uh, relaying all the brick across the east side and the west side. So I think that's important to maintain our brick street. Thank you.
Well spoken, Your Honor. Alderman Tompkins?
Thank you. Our machine down here isn't working, so I can't see who's next or anybody. So thank you. Um, I just wanted to share, first, I just want to thank everybody for coming down. Um, I appreciate your time and your investment in Davenport. Um, I hear what everybody's saying. Um, obviously, this is a really good discussion, and there's a lot to talk about. Um, we've talked about improving our process in regards to historical preservation, and really identifying what those places are, and making sure that there's a, there's a process to follow, so that we really shouldn't have a discussion. It should just be this, this is or this isn't. Um, so for that matter, simply for making sure that we dot all of our i's and cross all of our t's, um, I would like to see the, all the bids, get all that information, and then make a decision, just so that we have all that information and continue this discussion, um, and before we make that final decision. Um, so I appreciate everybody. I'm not saying to go either way, I'm just saying I want to have all that information. Um, so that is just my thoughts, and I wanted to share, and thank everybody for coming down. I do appreciate it.
All right. Alderman Kuhl?
You know, ten Aldermen, nine Aldermen tonight, and nine sets of eyes, everybody sees things differently. And, um, you know, as a wildlife biologist, I spent my career working with ecosystems, and I always recognized that diverse ecosystems were strong ecosystems. Um, always concerned about some of our monotypical crops out here with corn and soybeans, uh, those things could fall, because we're, we're, we're so reliant on those single systems. But when you have a diverse system, you have a strong system. So as I was thinking about what was being said tonight, I said, you know, um, we have all kinds of, of, of things, all kinds of diversity. And diversity, capital D diversity, is what makes Davenport strong, makes us stronger than some of our surrounding communities, because we have things that they frankly can't have. Because we've got, we've got age, we've got time on our side. So I was thinking, you know, one of the, uh, one of the housing areas in my ward is Jersey Meadows. Jersey Meadows doesn't have any brick streets, nor would they ever want a brick street in their community. Um, but down in Hamburg and the Gold Coast, these things are natural. And when you start to take away the context, those things that, that support those houses up on the hill, gradually you start to lose, until the point where those houses no longer become important at all. So 10, 20, 30 years, those houses go away, and then you've lost something very important relating to diversity. So the old, you know, I was born and raised in Iowa, and one of the sayings that we have in Iowa is, don't eat your seed corn. I'll leave it at that.
Alderman Mattson?
Gee, I don't know how to follow that necessarily. That was good. And I don't know how to necessarily think about that, being from Iowa, but that was good. Um, so we talk about urban revitalization, um, this might be a good signal to say we're serious.
All right. Yeah, yeah, I guess. We listened to the past mayor. You know, we talked about neighborhoods, our great core neighborhoods, south of Locust Street. And when you look at how they cobbled a street in the past, you know, it's, it's embarrassing and shameful. And, you know, looking at the pictures the young lady brought forward, I mean, let's, uh, we've made a commitment, commitment to our core neighborhoods, and, uh, this will be a great project to start our commitment with. And, uh, the sewer project is incredibly important, but, you know, to finish it off properly. Alderman McGinnis?
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. So I would like to make a motion that we, um, direct staff to go for one bid, which is for all brick, um, intersection street, um, and not go out for the, the other bids.
Roll call, please.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kuhl?
Yes.
Tompkins?
No.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Eight yeses, Your Honor, one nay.
All right. The next item in discussion is a resolution accepting the Granite Way project completed by Lehman Construction Incorporated, Rock Island, Illinois. This project was completed with a final contract amount of $2,804,552. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number three is a resolution approving the pros, proposed plan specification, formal contract. An estimated cost for the Utica Ridge Sidewalk Phase Two, estimated cost $102,000. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number four is a resolution awarding the contract for the Sterilite Intersection Improvement Rise Project, RMX dash 1827 dash 9082, to Abs, Absolute Concrete Construction Incorporated, Slater, Iowa, in the amount of $2,300, or, yeah, $2,359,690. Anybody from the public? Counsel? The last item is number five, a motion to award a contract for the Duck Creek South Sewer Manholes to Legacy Corp, Corporation of East Moline, Illinois, in the amount of $69,851. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Alderman Dunn, please set the agenda.
With item number one being amended, I would recommend to put that on discussion agenda, with the remaining items on consent.
All in favor? Thank you for the second. Alderman Mattson, opposed? Thank you, Your Honor.
Uh, thank you very much. And our, um, last area to be discussed this evening is our finance area, and Alderman Tompkins will lead that discussion, and Alderman McGinnis will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. And just also to note, I have no idea, so if somebody lights up, maybe raise your hand. Um, so just putting that out there. Um, so I'm going to start with finance. We have lots to go over tonight. Um, number one is a resolution setting a public hearing on the conveyance of a vacant lot, parcel G0034 dash 25. Oh, thank you. Um, formerly 1012 West Ninth Street, located in Mitchell's Bluff Edition. Anyone from the public have a comment on this item? Anyone from council? Thank you. Seeing and hearing no one, this item moves forward. Um, number two is a resolution approving a three-year renewal of the Microsoft Enterprise License Agreement in the amount of $523,767.78 to be paid over three annual installments. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move forward. Number three is a resolution approving the purchase of mobile data computers and accessories from Caltech Incorporated at the price of $274,628.23, and authorizing Mayor Frank Klipch to sign and manage any related agreements. Um, this is new, um, new items for the police department, so pretty exciting. Um, anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item moves forward. Number four is a resolution setting a public hearing to convey a city-owned parcel W0425 dash 01, adjacent to the east of 2305 West 67th Street, owned by the Dirksens, petitioners Ronald and Janice Dirksen. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item moves forward. Number five is a motion approving the purchase of a Vermeer chipper from NJPA Contract from Vermeer Corporation of Pala, Iowa, in the amount of $56,000, $56,200. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item moves forward. Number six is a motion awarding a contract for security services at several city locations to Permar Security Services of Davenport. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Great, this item moves forward. Uh, number seven is a motion approving the withdrawal from the Iowa Joint Utility Management Program. Um, this is actually going to, uh, save us some money. So appreciate that staff for looking into that. Um, anyone from public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move forward. Number eight, we're going to suspend the rules. Do I need to read that? I do, okay. Thank you. Number eight is a motion setting a public hearing for the fiscal year 2019 operating budget, fiscal year 2019 capital improvement program, and the fiscal year 2019 fiscal year 2024 capital improvement program for February 21st, 2018. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? And this one just died. So did anybody want to come? Yeah. It's just not my night tonight. Alderman Mattson?
So just quickly, if you want to, if you want to comment on our budget process, and it's been open, and we have Saturday meeting, that's the time to come, that date, 21 February.
Yes. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, no. Thanks. All right. So we made it through all those. Thank you. Um, Alderman McGinnis, will you please set the agenda?
Yes. Um, I would, um, recommend that, or make a motion that items one through seven, one through seven, uh, be put on the consent agenda, and then item eight, we will be voting on later tonight. So that'd be carried forward to vote on later tonight.
Have a motion and a second? Thank you. Um, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say aye. And that concludes finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. Um, we're going to move on to other ordinance, and that's what we've just discussed. Brandon, could you come up and just give an idea of the process here, just so people understand what we're doing, if you would? Um, the suspension of the rules, we'll take care of that, but the actual what we're voting on?
Very good. Uh, Brandon Wright, CFO. Uh, for the city, uh, as Alderman Mattson indicated, we do have a public hearing coming up on our fiscal year 2019 budget. Uh, that, that public hearing will be held on February 21st. Uh, this motion tonight really just sets the public hearing, um, and is important, because tomorrow, and tomorrow's newspaper, everyone will look for it, uh, will be publishing the notification of that meeting, and so we wanted to make sure that it was approved prior to that notification, prior to that publication.
Thank you, Brandon. I appreciate that. So with that, uh, is there a motion to suspend the rules to vote on that following motion? So moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Uh, let's see. Kuhl?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Um, all right, we, now we're going to have the motion setting the public hearing for FY two, 2019, uh, operating budget, FY 2019 capital improvement program, and FY 19 through 24, capital improvement program for February 21st, 2018.
So moved.
It's moved. I think we, is there any, we still have to ask any public any comment? I don't think any would have that. No. Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. Uh, roll call, please.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kuhl?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Again, we're going to now open it up for public with business. I just want to note, again, this is a time when individuals may address the council, it says it in your packet there, on any matters of city business. Uh, this is not an opportunity to discuss, uh, items. We just are here to listen and get information. And again, in accordance with our open meetings law, we cannot vote on any item or complain or suggestion tonight, uh, and cannot respond of, on any issues at this point. We're going to listen. If there's something we can help with, we'll point you in the right direction. But is there anyone with, from the public that would like to, uh, make a comment? If you would, give your name and address, please.
Uh, thank you again. Uh, Terry Gens, 321 West Sixth, Davenport. Um, this is something that's been on my mind for a long time. I've walked, um, to and from work downtown Davenport for 20 years, and I've always not liked the gravel city parking lot on Harrison and Fifth. It's right by the railroad tracks. Um, I talked to a previous, um, Alderman about it, and he, all he said was, well, is it dusty, or what? And I'm like, well, when it gets plowed, all of the gravel ends up on the sidewalk. Um, the plow trucks hit the, the, um, concrete parking barriers, and they push them out on the sidewalk, and then there's weeds every year. And, um, I've probably called the city for the last 10 years, every single year without fail, to cut the weeds, because they get sometimes three feet tall. And for me, um, I don't understand, again, you know, we're trying to beautify Davenport, and especially downtown. I don't understand why we have a city parking lot right there that's gravel. It just looks like a dirty gravel pit of a parking lot. Thank you. I, and I think it should be paved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. My name's Dale Gilmore. I live in the sixth ward. I have two things I'd like to touch on tonight, the second being of most important to me. The first topic is RagBri. This event brings a couple thousand bicyclists to town for a day. Most leave the same day, maybe eating a meal here, and then return home. Very few spend the night here. Please don't get me wrong, I have absolutely nothing against bicyclists. I have kind of a bum knee, so you'll never see me running the bics, or pedaling in RagBri. I guess my point is that with all the hype and expense associated with RagBri, I really don't think it has the great economic impact on Davenport that some may believe. Now for my second point. I think many, if not most of you, know I'm a car guy. Can you tell? Uh, I, I don't hunt fish or golf, and I have nothing against hunters, fishermen, or golfers. Those are just sports that don't appeal to me. I'm a car guy. I'd like to tell you about an annual event held in Springfield, Illinois. It's called the Route 66 Fest. I've been a regular 10D for many years, driving one of my cars down on Friday, returning on Sunday afternoon. In 2018, the dates will be September 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. Now, I bring up this illustration to let you know that I've already registered my car, and, and have hotel reservations. This is next September. Car guys do that. We plan ahead. This coming September will be the 17th annual event, so it's not exactly brand new, but it has become well-established. Springfield blocks off an area downtown, about five blocks We plan ahead. This coming September will be the 17th annual event, so it's not exactly brand new, but it has become well-established. Springfield blocks off an area downtown about five blocks wide and about six blocks long for the entire weekend. Stores and restaurants stay open for the entire weekend. The classic cars are all parked diagonally along the streets. On Friday night, there's a cruise through Springfield, finishing in the show area. In order to participate in the cruise, you have to make a minimum $5 donation to Crime Stoppers. Every year, all the participants receive a review or program from the previous year's show. Not on my point. I have in my hand a review from last year's September show. In 2016, there were over 1,000 classic cars in the cruise and over 80,000 spectators during the three-day event. You talk about economic impact. The organizers also have a variety bands all playing at no cost to the spectators. There, you may walk two blocks, then there'll be another band set up on a temporary stage. In 2015, one of the bands my wife and I enjoyed, and here's a blast from the past, some of you younger people won't understand this, but it was Gary Puckett and the Union Gap. They also had a large stage that showcases their primary band, and no Gary Puckett and the Union Gap wasn't the primary band. Sorry for the sidetrack, but back to my point. Springfield, Illinois is a very friendly, car-friendly city. The button I have on is from the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau. To those too far away, I'll read what it says. It asks, can your car come out and play? I do not have a guess what the economic impact of the Route 66 Fest has for Springfield, but I bet it would be significant. Little old Monmouth, Illinois. If you've ever been there, it's a wide spot in the road down 67, about 45 minutes. They host a cruise the first Friday in August. Cars park around the town square, up and down Main Street and side streets for many, many, many blocks. A live band performs at the square, and thousands of spectators admire the hundreds of classic cars that are there. Many food vendors are available with a variety of choices to feed any desire you may have. Davenport has twice hosted an overnight stop for the Hot Rod Power Tour. This event brings in over 1,000 cars to the area for the night. Restaurants are full, hotels are full, and I will say that overall, Davenport is car-friendly. We've earned this reputation, now let's do something about it. I'm not suggesting a Route 66 Fest-type of event. We would need to start small and grow as the event becomes more successful. It wouldn't take a lot of money, mainly the effort and consideration of many. Did you notice I said many? So, what do you think? We could take this whole year to plan for 2019. We could call it, well, I'll have to think about that. Thank you.
Anyone else? You can bring Anthony up if you want.
Deanna Walter.
And Tanya Rogers.
Tanya Rogers. Anthony Michael Kimmel.
I just want to say thank you. I think that as a small citizen and a business owner, that it feels great when I know that you listen, and it's not necessarily because you voted in our favor, but you listen and[1729.11]